The options and keep us in tune with what the community wants, what you want. And then just give us the strength to be solid and to be focused and to do the best we can. Amen.
Thank you. Would you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? And would Mayor Protem Dunlap, would you mind leading us in that?
Sure.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So soon after our recognition of the 20th year since the 9/11 attacks, that Pledge of Allegiance has more and more significance. And with that, we have scheduled a workshop today to discuss options that we have budgetarily to make modifications to our city budget. We have the opportunity to hear from the public, but I believe that will be most valuable after you've heard the discussion by the council. So, public comment will follow the workshop as it is conducted today. And with that, we can begin that study session. The city clerk has spoken of how those at home may be able to contact us as well. We will take questions and public comment after the workshop. Mr. Acting City Manager Steve Danley, please.
I was gonna ask you to put it up, but you already did. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to present the potential impacts of the budget reduction scenarios and the use of ARPA monies. We look forward to the discussion on these items. Before we get started, I'd like to give a brief introduction of where we'll be going. First, we'll recap the general fund financial scenarios that we looked at at the last study session. Then we'll identify the scenario impacts to the contingency reserve level. Third, we'll take a look at the financial and service level impacts of each budget scenario. We'll discuss strategic priorities. And lastly, we'll ask for a council direction on when they would like to formally vote on potential budget changes and ARPA allocation. As we proceed during the presentation, please feel free to ask questions, request any details from us, and we'll be able to handle those. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Ellis.
Thank you, Steve. So, these next few recap slides were previously reviewed at the last study session. I will provide a brief recap and highlight some key points from each. Is this working?
Put it out in your computer.
Can you switch things, Steve? Thanks. Okay. So, here on Slide 3, as was previously identified from the slide in the last study session, the general fund forecast for fiscal year 2021, which is actually not presented here, was adjusted to account for the projected increase of approximately $4 million in general fund balance and the projected increase of approximately $163,000 of additional revenue from increased development fees. And those are encased in that beginning fund balance number of the $14.5 million. Staff will bring forth an agenda report on September 21st proposing that City Council designate this additional unassigned fund balance as contingency reserves, thereby increasing the contingency reserve levels for fiscal year end 2021. So, moving on to fiscal year 2122. The trajectory on this slide shows two critical negative financial events. One, that by the end of fiscal year 2223, the general fund is projected to only have a 2.9 million or 2.6% contingency reserve level, which is far below the minimum 10% required. And two, by the end of fiscal year 2324, all contingency reserves are projected to be depleted, and the general fund is projected to end with a negative fund balance of approximately $800,000. This forecast demonstrates that without the use of ARPA funds, the current 3.8 million -- can you go back to Slide 3? The current 3.8 million vacancy savings brought about by holding 4% or approximately 37 positions vacant will be insufficient to sustain a viable financial position for the city. It is an important reminder to note that the city has been balancing its general fund budget by maintaining these position vacancies for several years. The current reduced service level to the public is the byproduct of this approach. For this, we're gonna actually skip over Slide 4 because I've kind of covered those report, those points on that previous slide. So, if you could switch to Slide 5. Thank you, Steve. This slide continues the current use of 3.8 million in vacancy savings and incorporates the application of ARPA funds into the budget. The ARPA funds are first designated as revenue replacement to support government operations with the remaining ARPA monies available to fund new or unbudgeted projects or programs. And that's highlighted in that yellow row there. This Scenario 1 slide shows that about $19.4 million of the city's 32.7 million of ARPA allocation is first applied to stabilize government operations over a five-year period. And that is in that yellow row, starting with fiscal year 2122 through fiscal year 2526. So, as highlighted in yellow, this 19.4 million is allocated in the following manner. 6.3 million in fiscal year 2122, 5.3 in 2223, 3.7 in 2324, 2.5 in 2425, and 1.6 million in fiscal year 2526. The application of ARPA in this manner will enable the general fund to operate through fiscal year 2526 while maintaining a contingency reserve level between 12 to 13%. This approach will result in approximately 13.3 million of the remaining ARPA funds for City Council designation in new projects or programs of its choice, and that's highlighted in that pinkish row at the bottom. So, if you could switch to Slide 7. Thank you, Steve. Scenario 2 shows the impact of an additional 2% cut above the 3.8 million vacancy savings resulting from holding a total of approximately 51 positions vacant. This scenario requires the reduction of an additional 14 positions, requires the use of approximately 8 million of ARPA funds to support current government operations, allowing 24 million of ARPA funds for designation by City Council to new projects or programs, and provides for a 13% contingency reserve level. As noted, this scenario requires the reduction of 14 additional positions above the already reduced 37 positions resulting in approximately 51 positions to be cut. This additional 2% reduction will significantly reduce service levels to the public. Next slide, thanks. So, here on Scenario 3, we show the impact of an additional 5% reduction above the 3.8 million vacancy savings from holding a total of approximately 72 positions vacant. This scenario requires the reduction of an additional 35 positions, requires the use of approximately 2 million of ARPA funds to support current government operations, allowing 30 million of ARPA funds for designation by City Council to new projects or programs, and provides for an approximate 17% and greater contingency reserve level over time. As noted, this scenario requires the reduction of 35 additional positions above the already reduced 37 positions resulting in about 72 positions to be cut. This will likely result in extreme impacts to already reduced service levels to the public. Next slide. Before I hand the presentation back to Steve, to recap the resulting impacts of the various scenarios on contingency reserves, I will present on the next two slides the additional scenario requested by City Council at the first study session. Next slide, Steve. So, here, City Council had requested a forecast showing the impact of maintaining contingency reserve levels at about 17%. This scenario shows that approximately $24 million of ARPA funds be applied to revenue replacement to support government operations in order to achieve a 17% contingency reserve level. As a result, this scenario provides approximately $8.6 million of ARPA funds for City Council designation towards non-budgeted projects or programs, once again highlighted in that pinkish row at the bottom. Further, by maintaining a 17% contingency reserve level by using ARPA for revenue replacement, there are no additional 2% to 5% cuts necessary over the next five years. And with that, I will hand the presentation back to Steve.
Actually, Ellis, I had a question real quick. So, it's my understanding, you know, you touched on something as you wrapped up your presentation related to revenue replacement for government services. And I know part of what, you know, because obviously you've had a lot of people, you know, press me, and certainly a primary concern of mine is getting the roads and streets repaired. It's my understanding we can actually use a portion of the funds in that same capacity, right? The difference in revenues between, like, year-over-year revenue can actually be used towards roads and streets.
That's correct.
Do we have, are you able to quantify that for us?
Well, based on our initial revenue loss calculation as presented at the first study session, we believe that we can probably utilize the majority of the 32.7 million as revenue loss, allowing the city the greatest amount of flexibility to apply ARPA monies, which would allow for streets and roads. There's only four main categories that are not allowable regardless of whether it's revenue replacement or new projects. And those are pensions, debt service, rainy day funds, and reserves, and then federal grant matching. Yeah. Those are the four things that are completely off limits.
Okay. So, thank you. And so, not saying that this is my suggestion, but assuming we wanted to do this, that 32 million could fully be spent on roads and streets.
We believe the majority of it could be fully spent on whatever City Council should elect to do.
Okay. Thank you.
The next slide is basically just a summary chart for all the four scenarios we just talked about. It lays it out on a one-sheet format. Scenario number one, there is the $3.8 million vacancy savings without ARPA. And as we discussed, so there's a zero in the ARPA column. You'd have the whole amount available of ARPA for whatever purposes you choose, but in doing so, our reserves would be depleted by fiscal year 2223, next fiscal year, and then we'd have a negative balance, fund balance, the following year. Scenario number one, using ARPA. You have, if we use ARPA first for government operations, then we have 19 -- we use 19.4 million for government operations, we'd have 13 million left over to spend on whatever projects we'd like to do, and that would maintain a 13% contingency level. I can go down through all these, but this gives you a one-page scenario of what each of those options would look like should you choose to do that. Move to the next slide, please. In this regard, we are looking for input from individual council members on the staff's recommended approach for first using ARPA funds for government operations. Right now, the council has a policy of a minimum 10% contingency reserve level. So, in order to do that, we have to use ARPA money to get us there. So, I want to talk to the council and get your individual input on, do you want to do a 10%? Do you want to do a 17%? Something in between? Or just get your thoughts? All of this will help us as we come back at a future meeting for you to be able to vote on what your choices are gonna be.
Do you want feedback now at each step?
If you'd like to.
That might make sense, at least at this stage. Is there anyone that cares to weigh in first? All right. I'll be happy to if no one's prepared. I've always felt that 18% reserves are optimal, and in normal times, that would be my goal. But as we all know, these aren't normal times for many reasons. So, I'm comfortable with staying with the standard City Council policy of the 10%. And in fact, this has been an emergency the last couple of years. Even if we had to temporarily dip below 10%, I wouldn't have a big problem with that. So, at least there's my feedback on this particular question.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
I too, you know, I was the one that asked for, what would it look like with the 17% reserve? And so, I'm with you that I want to have a rainy day fund for what comes before us. But I also understand that we're down to the basic level of services that we can provide to our residents. I know I've had four, five emails regarding Parks and Recs services, and are the gym, is the gym open? When's it gonna open? Are you charging more? And I know the softball people are also asking, why are the fees increasing? You know, they're taking on an extra cost for playing softball. And so, to that note, I mean, I would be happy, again, with you, to keep it at a 10 or maybe at a 10. I don't know if I could tolerate dipping below that. But I also would like to see if we could, you know, fill some of those vacancies. Instead of having 3.8 million in vacancies, maybe cut that number down so we can bring a little more service to the community. I mean, we're in the business of servicing the residents, the community, keeping us going. And not that I'm asking for all the 32 million or all the 3.8 million to be wiped, swiped away, which would be great, but I know we can't do it right now. But I would like to see what scenarios where we perhaps do, I don't know, instead of 3.8, we do what is it, a 1 point, 3 million? Maybe give back 800,000 or give back 1.5 million, just to start to build our personnel, our infrastructure, if you will, so that we can start providing a few more services. I know we've gone around with the museum, and we were able to allocate 150,000, I believe, to them to get open. But we couldn't assist them with personnel to help them open and to help them run the place because it wasn't in the budget. And these are the little things that I think they get cut first, the community services of Parks and Rec. And I'd like to see if we can maybe do, you know, I call it give back 1.5 or 1 million so our vacancy, instead of being 3.8, could go to 3 million or, I don't know, 2.5. You know, a number where it'll give the city manager and staff a little flexibility to add some services, to add, well, yeah, services to the community. But I agree with you. I would like to have more of a reserve, but I know even 17%, you know, you talked about 18 would be quite an undertaking, and we would definitely not have a lot of flexibility to do other projects.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Councilmember Jung.
Our neighbors in Buena Park have a budget a fifth of our size and have more reserves because they prioritize the importance of having a rainy day fund. Indeed, their reserves, per their own policy, is 20%. We're talking about 10. You know, we have a councilman here that just expressed his concerns about Parks and Recs and that those in the community express those concerns to him rightfully so. Yet, we are so quick to build trails and parks and ironically do little or nothing to investigate and plan for the cost of the long-term maintenance of those trails and parks. You know, maybe we wouldn't maintain, it wouldn't be a concern and a, this thing that we have to consistently have to speak about, if we took a little time to build the parks or design the parks in a manner where they didn't take much upkeep. They didn't require, we just have to rethink how we view parks. Is it necessary in a drought, which we'll be in for an extensive period of time, for Memorial now, to have green turf that's not being utilized? It's not a soccer field, a football field, a softball field, or a baseball or rugby field. Is it required? Shouldn't we rethink some of these things and start planning for what's the future? And instead, here we are talking about vacating our rainy day fund because we're in the middle of an extraordinary pandemic. I think everybody is clear in their understanding that every city, every municipality is in the same situation we are. We're not extraordinary by that regard. But how we prioritize through the years in spending this money, we are almost an outlier in that regard. So, I hope we come to some sound policy as we move forward, Mr. Mayor and council, because so far, it's been terribly disappointing, I suppose. Thank you.
Well, allow me to at least summarize what some of your comments were regarding, which I believe is overhead. And if we engage in an activity of building overhead year to year as a city and don't try to engineer cost savings as we go, then this is where we find ourselves every year, correct? Okay. And with that, Mayor Protem.
I just add, I mean, look, we can have the discussion about staffing and service levels later, I think, as it's appropriate, but with respect to this item, I mean, I agree with some of the comments that you've shared, also Councilmember Jung, related to sort of the goalposts here. I think if we have 10% as a minimum, we maintain that for the time being. You know, I think that's certainly fine for an operating budget. I think for a multi-year financial plan, we certainly want to strive to get on track with more of the 17%. So, perhaps we look at that in conjunction, you know, where we put the budget in the context or in conjunction with, you know, sort of a multi-year financial plan. That's how I would like to look at that.
Okay. Thank you for that.
I always skipped over the first bullet point, which is extremely important. In all these scenarios, we use ARPA first to make sure we have that minimum 10%. So, I want to get your thoughts on that, that you're comfortable with that, because that requires, like, if you were to choose Scenario 1, that requires $19 million of ARPA funds to maintain that 10%. So, but if you don't do that, then next year, we're only at 2.9 million dollars of surplus, and after that, we're in the red. So, individually, are you okay with us first using ARPA to make sure we have that contingency reserve level at a minimum 10%?
Well, to the extent, my understanding is that we need to use ARPA in a timely fashion. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, that would be important. I looked at the way that it scales down over the five years, and I was toying with the idea of reversing that. And, you know, at the end of the five years, it would be the same result. But my question about reserve funds is what are they for? If we're able to go with reserve funds at a certain level forever, then they've never been used in an emergency since. And if ever there's been an emergency, it's about where we're at right now. So, the idea of reserve funds always being untouchable is a bit of a misnomer, I think, for me. We do have very many needs, and we do need to address those needs, and particularly where services are involved. But one other question that I have, our current service levels, the question is about vacant positions, and we've gone for several years with these vacant positions. Used to be the strategy, when I was at the County of Orange, that we would eliminate those positions if they've been vacant for some period of time. While that may impact services, we're in a unique situation here where the lockdowns and the pandemic have actually reduced our ability to even provide customer service in many regards. That has yielded an abstract sort of savings, I think. And we don't know what the future holds. We don't know what we're looking at down the road. So, that's where I think the normal rules don't apply quite so much. At least, that's where I'm leaning right now. Anyone else have input?
So, I guess, from what I'm understanding or gathering, that we would be willing to give them authority to use some of the ARPA funds to keep that 10% balance going. That would be the, that would be the only way to keep that 10% reserve going for the...
If we don't use ARPA for that, then in two years, we're gonna be in the red. So, I think it's a question we have to use it, and what our scenarios are based on is maintaining the 10%. Now, you can change that anytime you'd like to.
No, and I'm in agreement of using the ARPA funds, and I'd like to use more to, as revenue replacement, and again, to fill some of these vacancies that I think we're lacking. And like the mayor said, we may not know what's gonna happen, but if we start opening up, I guess we can always fill those vacancies to provide more services. But I'd like to see us do it now to give you a little more flexibility in how to manage and run and provide service from the city.
Okay. Next slide, please. 16 or 17, maybe? There we go. This is a slide that shows more specific financial and service level impacts from each of the first three scenarios. It gives you a breakdown of what more specifically it would mean. Scenario 1 is basically the status quo of what we've been operating on and that we are currently operating on because we're not using ARPA money. So, we talked about that on the service impact side, we have 37 positions vacant. It does minimize bargaining group impacts because that's already happening. On the financial impact side, it doesn't achieve structural balancing, but does give us five years to find another revenue source or additional efficiencies. It results in a 3.13% contingency reserve level and then allows for $13 million of ARPA funds for new projects. If we go with Scenario 2 with 2% additional cuts, and the financial impacts, it still maintains 13% contingency reserves. It does address the structural deficit by 2526. It gives us more ARPA money, 24 million, to use for new projects, and it does provide some flexibility for one-time pay increases should we choose to do that. On the service impact side, going with 2%, as we talked about, that's a 51-position reduction. So, it's 37 with the first scenario plus 14 equals 51, and it will be a negative impact on, obviously, on service levels. If we do that, then obviously, union negotiations will be more difficult, they'll take longer, and the things we have to do to implement those will, the time it takes, we don't get the savings right away because it takes longer to get them. There's more business and public complaints as we have reduced service levels. And then, there's also the unknown multiplier consequences of shutting down parts of the organization that we just don't know what's gonna happen as we close down parts of the organization. There's just unintended consequences. And at the same time, once we are cutting back, it does lend to staff starting to look for other places of employment and moving elsewhere. Then the last scenario, this is a 5% cut. The financial impacts on the positive side, we do eventually get up to a 17% contingency level. It does address the structural deficit by next fiscal year. It provides us nearly all the ARPA funds for new projects, and it allows for greater flexibility on any pay raises that we might contemplate. On the negative side, there's 72-position reductions that will result in extreme debilitating impacts to departments. Essentially, whole divisions or services may have to be cut in certain areas to meet that 72-position reduction. It will complicate union negotiations. Staff will also be looking for other places to work, and then maybe potential loss of businesses or residents due to the cut impacts and the reduction of service levels. Next slide. No, we don't. That was just something we asked for, council, earlier. Strategic priorities? Can we move to the next one? This is where I'd like individual City Council input on what you personally feel are the priorities, because if we go through this process and we have... priorities, because if we go through this process and we have to cut 2% or we have to cut 5%, we need to know what the priorities are. So one of the things we've talked about is, in these cut scenarios that we've done, we did across-the-board cuts. If we were going to really do these cuts, instead of doing across the board, we would do them by the priorities that the city council sets on where they want to maintain priority services. So this would help us in that regard. So if I could, if I could get your individual input on what you consider your top-level priorities.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes, Councilmember Jung.
Before we do a deep dive into priorities, I want to make sure that the public and staff understand that unfortunately, there's been a false choice that's continuously been presented by elected officials in the city who are misguided and continue to misinform the public, saying that the budget is heavily staff-based, and without giving raises or employing more of them, services in the city would deteriorate. And the common truth that every Fullertonian who's lived here for decades understands is fairly evident to most of them. Water infrastructure is failing all around the city, because little has been done through decades to modernize it. A camera system that would aid our police department with public safety doesn't work because we haven't bothered to fix it. IT in this building is antiquated, pretty much a relative joke for those that know, because nothing's been done to take preventative measures. Even basic computers in this building can't hold a simple, updated version of Windows because for years, nothing was done to prioritize their budget and their replacement. So this is a discussion, we haven't even gotten into the roads part, the sidewalks. Infrastructure comes in many forms. I'm sure the federal government, at this point, recognizes that. And a budget would reflect a way more equitable breakdown if it took into those things that are factored. If you took relative replacement, modernization, infrastructure, our budget would reflect that. It wouldn't be, as those have said, 70% service-based. Might be less than that. The only reason why it's 70% is because we haven't done any of these things. So our public cries out, says, hey, we'd like some roads fixed, we'd like the sidewalks fixed so we can walk. Yet we haven't done any of these things, they're not reflected in the budget. The only thing that's reflected in the budget are the folks at work here. And it's a terrible situation for this council, the city, the staff, and its residents to be in. But this is a problem that all of us, to a man, inherited, should have been fixed decades ago. So that false choice of, we need, if we cut, services will be impacted? Services are impacted now. I hope we can get the correct information out to folks and not panic them.
Thank you, Councilmember Jung. Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I'll add, I mean, looking, I think in terms of priorities here, you know, certainly, this is, you know, this encompasses many things that the city, you know, is concerned with or focused on or provides. I certainly think this, at least from a priorities perspective, is, at least right now, this is, well, I mean, I might move community and economic development up a notch, because I think that coincides with or ties into the whole workforce, employee attraction, and retention. But I think you got to put public safety, infrastructure maintenance with roads, water, street, IT sewer, IT buildings, community and economic development. So I'd go 1, 2, 3, and then maybe skip have workforce, you know, and then the parks, recs, parks and rec, library, arts, other, you know, kind of in that order. But, you know, I also echo the points that, you know, Councilmember Jung shared. I mean, obviously, some of the things that we hear about or read about, it's, you know, you hear about this stuff. I certainly wouldn't run a private business this way, and so to see that, you know, my city, my hometown, has been run this way is upsetting and, you know, disappointing at times. I mean, you see this, and you hope, you know, the people that you had voted for in the past to help make these decisions, and the staff that work here in this building are capable and competent enough of leading the city towards making those right decisions. And so it's just always disappointing when you see that they're not. But the reality is, we're here today to address this budget and hopefully set us forward on the right foot.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor, you know, we talked about narratives to the public, but the city is not a regular business, so we can't run it like a regular business, but we're charging revenue, we're trying to create a profit. We're not geared for that. So that's another thing we say, we know, a lot of people say, well, you should run it like a business. But I don't, I've talked to a lot of people, and it's just, we're not providing the service that we can charge over. I mean, we're not charging your, our residents extra to sweep their streets. That would be in essence of a business, you want your street swept, we're going to charge you overhead and a profit margin to have your streets swept. We haven't done that. So I don't know about, you know, running this like a business. And then on priorities, you know, these look, what I think I might go for, but just a point of clarification, Mr. Jung. So when you talk about, you know, you want, this reflected to show our infrastructure. So from what I understand, are you saying that you would put infrastructure maintenance first, or keep it there and just focus on getting more projects, infrastructure projects completed? Just for clarification.
I appreciate that, Councilman. The way it looks right now, I would agree with you and Mayor Protem. I like the way the list looks right now. Maybe flip-flop workforce, retention, and community and economic development. But apart from that, from a priority perspective, I would agree with the list as it sits there about right now.
And so I think the workforce retention would be critical, because without that, we maintain our own sewers, we maintain our own water lines in terms of, so if we drop employee retention and attraction, we have that trouble with the water engineer that we can't seem to hire, qualify one to run a water pump. And that's the reason I would advocate to go from that 3.8 million savings, maybe reduce it to a, I don't know, 2.3 vacancy savings, and give back, you know, 1.4 to fill, and maybe even staff a community and economic development team. So some of these, I know, we've all heard this, that when there's a developer coming in, the biggest thing for them is time. Time costs them money. And I know that, I've heard that, and I've also heard, well, they do a great job. So I think if we're going to do that, community and economic development, we got to staff it up so that we're getting projects in, we're getting them out without having to wait. And, because again, you know, I've heard it enough, I think it's true for the developers and for a lot of people, time is money. And the longer we keep a project, holding onto it to approve it, it's costing them money. So that was, that's one of the reasons I would like to see us, you know, reduce that vacancy amount. And if we do it to, let's say, I don't know, 2.3, we're still going to have funding available, you know, about 9 million in ARPA funds for our own discretion. It's not the 13, but I think we still have that to go out and do a couple, you know, a few infrastructure processes, where we do the water, the sewers, and the pavement, you know, the one-dig process. So, I mean, I would keep them like this, but I also would like to see us give back, if you will, and take that 3.7 and get it down maybe to a 2.3 or 2.5.
I agree with a lot of your sentiments, Councilman. The economic and community development is important to me, because we got to find ways to pay for it, right? And what department does better than that. So if we're going to try to attract revenue and enhance it in the city, I think we need to boost that department up a little bit, and I think I could have your support on that.
Councilmember Silva, I agree with you on trying to restore service levels, but I do take note of what Councilmember Jung talked about, which is, there's a cause and effect here very much. We've seen it with our water system, where it generates so much more loss and cost because we aren't getting replacements. We aren't handling the maintenance, at least to the degree that could be preventive. And so that investment could actually reverse some of the cause and effect. It could start lowering our costs going forward if it's more reliable. And that's why an investment in infrastructure is so important. Your recommendation on the other side, though, on the labor side, of trying to build that backup, it has the unfortunate consequence of also building overhead, of increasing our pension service costs, and a number of other factors. And that's where investment in infrastructure doesn't really yield that. And at least where the Mayor Protem talked about operating more like a business, at least a business keeps an awareness of its costs and is in a competitive situation. And we need to do what we can to try to get ahead of that, because it's not, it's not an enjoyable situation for any city council, any member sitting up here, to have a chronic structural deficit in the budget. So sometimes, short-term pain needs to be born in order to achieve long-term gain.
Yeah. And I would, and I would agree with you, and you just mentioned, be competitive. We're not competitive. We're losing, you know, fire, police to other agencies, and it's costing us to retrain them. And with that water engineer, it wasn't even about, that person was, we need him because we have, the water issues, we have P5 and Chrome 6, so we need him to manage that. It's not that we need that specific engineer and he'll go away, we fix our leaking pipes. We're still going to need him. And when we can't keep him, when they're leaving, I think to your point, we're not being competitive to keep the best hires. And I'm not saying, you know, right now, hire the 37 people. I'm saying, give them the option, here's X number of dollars, what fits best so that we can be competitive and we can keep providing services and not have them fall as we go along. But I hear what you're saying, Mayor.
Yeah, I'm listening to you too. Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I was just going to add, because apparently, the comparison to a business was lost on my colleague, so I would say that maybe in the context of your own personal residence, you know, if you have a critical structure that fails, or a system that fails, you know, you're not just going to leave a water line that's broken, or you've had a slab leak, or there's some other issue, you know, you're not just going to leave it there and not respond to it and let, you know, your property crumble, you're going to figure out a way to fix it, whether that's borrowing, saving, figuring out a way in your budget to do that. So my own response, my comparison was in relation to the city simply not responding to and not fixing things, for whatever reason, over time, not prioritizing these things, and leaving us with those issues. And so, you know, it wasn't in relation to necessarily running it like a business, it was your own, you know, looking at something as though it were your own personal property, right? And how you would respond to it.
Okay, no, because you just said, I wouldn't run my business this way, so that's where it clicked. So, thanks.
At this point, before we get to the ending slide, if Council has something else that they want to discuss or call for public comments, maybe the time to do that before we...
The thing that I'd like to say is, certain situations do call for major surgery as opposed to a Band-Aid. And that's why, if we're leaning in the direction of standard budgeting practice and what we're trying to do to maintain kind of comfortable transition, that may not be the most optimal mode that we should be in at this point. I'll leave it to the other council members to have. I did want to point out that Councilmember Zahra is not here this evening, so you're receiving direction from 80% of the councils, so I'm sure that he will provide his commentary to you as soon as he's able to.
He's never been shy about that.
Right. So I just wanted to point out that that voice is not here this afternoon, and that needed to be noted.
At this point, unless Council has anything further to...
Anything that you'd like to, another log to throw on the fire at this point? Any member?
Well, just to my idea, I think, you know, not having, for next steps, if I may, maybe bring back a scenario to see what I'm advocating for, reducing that vacancy amount, and just see what it looks like with the numbers.
We can do that today, if you'd like.
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to see what that would be, just so we can see if we give back 1 million, 2 million, or none, we could...
Alice, why don't you walk them through this particular...
So here, what we had done is, we had maintained a minimum 10% contingency reserve level across fiscal years '21, '22 through fiscal year '25, '26. Each of the different scenarios are at that 10% minimum contingency reserve level, and what we had done was labeled them individually, A, B, and C. So at scenario A, we are looking at maintaining a 3 million vacancy savings versus the 3.8 million vacancy savings, and utilizing ARPA to fund budgeted government operations in order to maintain that 10% contingency reserve level. So you can see the impacts on the yellow highlight, the first yellow highlighted row at the $3 million vacancy savings, and the amount of ARPA needed for that. The remaining ARPA for city council designation would be about 12.5 million dollars for city council use for non-budgeted projects and programs. Scenario B is in that second yellow highlighted row, and from there, you can see that we had reduced the vacancy savings from that 3.8 million to about 2.3 million, which is about 1.5 less. And then from there, that would require use of ARPA in that second yellow highlighted row, and it would still leave about 8.9 or about $9 million of ARPA for new unbudgeted projects or programs. That last scenario is with, instead of a 3.8 million vacancy savings, we would be looking at a $1 million vacancy savings while maintaining 10% contingency reserves. What would be remaining would be about 4.9 or about $4.8 million of ARPA for new unbudgeted projects or programs.
And so if we do B, Ms. Chang, we have about $9 million to use on one time, and that would get us, it's about 10%, right, the contingency?
The contingency reserve, we did the math, so it fell directly at a 10% contingency reserve level, based on the estimated increase to general fund expenditures for each level of scenario presented.
Okay. And so I guess, how could we, let's say we do B, what else could we do with our ARPA funding to get that contingency up, let's say, to 12%? Could we figure out a way to take some of that ARPA funding and get that at 12?
You would essentially need to increase that second yellow highlighted row to a higher number in order to have contingency reserves at above 10%.
Okay.
So it would reduce the amount available for new unbudgeted projects or programs.
And if we do A, that we do the vacancy, I believe you said, of...
We give back in essence 800,000.
You would allow the city manager authority to fill or just retain about $3 million of positions vacant. It would give him some flexibility to staff based on city council priorities.
And the same thing, we can increase that amount a little more to keep that contingency up maybe to 12% if we decide.
It would essentially deplete at the bottom, the yellow, the pink highlighted rows, it would deplete what would be available for non-budgeted items, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, and so, yeah, and then, these are scenarios I think that I would really consider, you know, I don't know if I would go with C, because we are in a different situation here, but I would like, I would be willing to look at A or B, where we, again, give the city manager a little flexibility in addressing what our departments need.
At this point, it may be good for public comments.
Okay, I just want to make sure that you're getting a good feel for the direction that might be required. And I had one question. Of these scenarios, which is the closest to our current budget that was passed with the proviso that we would be able to make changes throughout the year?
Our current budget, let me go back to first scenario. If I'm understanding the question, I apologize if I'm not. So the adjusted general fund forecast is here on slide three. This is essentially where our current budget stands for fiscal year '21, '22, with the one, with the two revisions for the beginning fund balance with, because we're projected to end fiscal year 2021, as I had mentioned earlier, with about $4 to $5 million of increased general fund, available fund balance. And in addition to that, city council had recently, at a city council meeting, had increased developer user fees. That $163,000 of additional revenues was included in that $101 million revenue number there on the fourth row.
You understood my question, so thank you for that. And it makes me more fully understand why the ARPA fund spending is more front-loaded and scales downward.
Yes, correct.
So that makes perfect sense.
So it's essentially to cover that net change in fund balance that is... that is showing in that second green row in red.
More or less the hangover from the last two years, right?
Correct.
Okay, well, with that, we would be, I think, unless any council member has, okay. We would be prepared to receive public comment, so anyone who's interested, please start lining up over near the microphone on the north wall. Mr. Package.
How do you organize this thing? I'm not that smart. Could I have Scenario 4? Thank you, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Whitaker and city council members. My name is Tony Package, and I have lived here in Fullerton for over 17 years. Please bring up Slide number, yeah, Scenario 4, thank you. My undergrad degree degrees were accounting, marketing, and philosophy. My first job was in accounting, and those five-plus years of accounting, I received my CPA and my MBA, then decided to switch to sales and marketing. It was a lot more exciting. During my accounting tenure, I vomited many of these spreadsheets, that's what I call them, vomiting spreadsheets, like the one presented today. These types of spreadsheets are projections based on golden, a golden counting principle called SWAG, S-W-A-G. Does anybody here know what SWAG is besides accounting people? Thank you. Okay, does it, so I will enlighten you. It's a sophisticated, wild-ass guess. That's what, that's what it is. But, and, and I did that for years. But I, I'm also, in defense of my accounting principles, they are also the results of a lot of hard work and projections, the projections are the SWAG part. I like Scenario 4 the best. You eliminated the 2% and 5% cuts, which saved our police and fire department from making drastic saving service cuts. Yay, thank you. But I object to you giving the city council $8.6 million discretionary spending. The name of the bill is American Rescue Plan Act, not Revenue Replacement. And who should we be rescuing? The dozens of public works and parks and rec people released. We need these hard-working people back. Our streets, our city streets and parks have become trash dumping grounds, and our parks and medians full of overgrown vegetation. Therefore, after the line after distribution of ARPA funds, the next line should read, Mr. Silva, you'll like this, 7.6 million dollars spread over five years, six years, for hiring back people for public works and park and rec. The line should be part of the budget plan so as not to get spent elsewhere. Please resist the temptation to spend on pet projects. Spend on people for the people. This leaves the city council with $1 million to fully fund the Fullerton Museum, $200,000 as promised by Councilman Jung, and do park improvements suggested by city, by councilmember Silva. Show the public your ability to work together. Make Fullerton a cleaner place and more enjoyable parks, and save the FMC. Thank you for your considerations, do the right thing for the people and environment. Two questions, are the salaries et cetera for the HR, Park, and Rec Manager in the current budget? What is projected cost of a CCTV replacement? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Package. One thing I have as well, as you're talking about accounting terms, when, when a number couldn't be easily substantiated, we referred to it as PFA, which, in its kindest definition, would be pulled from air, but it could be pulled from another source as well.
Yes, it could, yes, I, I remember that one. I did, the air move.
Thanks for your comments.
Very welcome.
And we'll ask anybody else who wants to speak to please line up on the wall so we don't miss you as we move along in public comment. And whoever's closest to the mic now can go next.
Hello, my name is Bernard, and I am a Fullerton resident. Councilmember Zara once told me that he named his meetings, "Let's Talk," because talking leads to action. I'll give him that, but talking does not replace action. In the last 10 months, what has this council majority actually done? This council majority has done nothing but destroy things that makes being a kid rad. You shuttered our museums and libraries. You turned our parks into plates on our city. You've done nothing about your campaign, promises to fix our roads, and you turn a blind eye to public safety. Mothers of the victims and victims themselves came out and recalled their traumatic experiences, which in and of itself is traumatic. And you didn't even have the decency to listen to them, much less look them in the eyes. What kind of human being are you? This isn't because they didn't contribute to your campaign. This council majority is the epitome of what turns folks off from participating in local government. You have blood on your hands. Stop blaming and actually do something. This is the second time you are mayor. So I repeat, in the last 10 months, what have you accomplished? But destroy our city while punishing and dismantling our city staff. Stop the cuts and stop punishing our city employees. Where is the talk about economic development to generate revenue, to reinvest into our educational institutions, and support our students? You acknowledge that this is the city of education, but that does not give you and your wife license to gamble at City Hall. City Hall is currently in District 1. You represent District 4, you carpetbagger. Simply reading a conspiracy blog does not make you a qualified epidemiologist.
Your, your time is, is completed.
Vaccinated.
And...
Go Bruins.
Thanks for providing your priorities to the council. Yes, next speaker.
Hi, Jesse Latour. I don't normally speak, but I was just, I just had some questions. I was hoping to get clarification, because this is a study session, so I don't know if you plan on doing this after the public comments, but I was curious what each of your preferred scenario is, like, you know, scenarios 1 through 4. And then also, I noticed, like, Mr. Dunlap, you had, have expressed in the past, and you expressed some idea about using the funds for infrastructure or road repair, and so I don't think that was factored into any of the four scenarios. So just out of sake, for the sake of clarity for, for me and the public, if you could be clear on what your actual intended priorities are, thanks.
If I may, I'll attempt to address that. I can't put words in the mouth of my fellow council members, but it seems like there has been some rejection of the notion of having to choose one of those scenarios in particular. And there's been effort to provide direction in what general direction or what lean we should go in. And it seems to me that, at least this afternoon, the infrastructure certainly has been favored, certainly by myself, but it sounds like from other council members as well, is a primary priority. Otherwise, I'm sure that we'll have some other variations. I'll allow the Mayor Pro Tem to, to comment on any of them.
Yeah, you know, in terms of, in terms of options, I don't know that we're there yet on one that I'm necessarily supportive of. I know early on, I certainly supported, you know, look, the reality is, nobody, nobody wants cuts, nobody wants to make the cuts, and nobody's ever wanted to make the hard decisions, and that's why we're in the position that we're in today. And if we continue to fail to act, and we don't make real substantive changes, you know, we're never, never gonna end up in a, in a better place. I think the reality is, the ARPA funding was, was really, I mean, obviously, that was kind of a gift, really, from, from nowhere, or out, from out of nowhere. And I think our ability to, to properly invest that into our road, streets, and infrastructure at this point in time, I think is absolutely critical. So, you know, I, I think, at least of the options that we're, that we're looking at here today, I certainly prefer something with probably the 2% to 5% cuts, where we're gonna be able to use some of that ARPA money towards the, you know, towards the, the reserves. But also, it'll get us, I think, on a better, stronger financial, you know, financial footing sooner. And I also think that we'll be able to then invest a large amount of that money into our road, streets, and infrastructure immediately, so that people can see some of the improvements that they've demanded for so long. So I, I think that's absolutely critical. It's just, it's, you know, it's unfortunate to be in this, in, in the position where you have to make cuts, but the reality is, that's, that's where we're at, you know? I think the, the alternative to that is tax increases, and we've seen in the last two election cycles what the public, what the voter base here in Fullerton has had to say about tax increases. You know, the school bonds failed significantly, and so did the sales tax measure last time around. And so, you know, I think the reality is, until you can go back to the taxpayer and show them that, hey, we have made these substantive cuts, you know, there's, I don't, I don't think there's an appetite for a tax increase.
ARPA is a gift from your great-grandchildren and their children as well.
Sure.
Yes, any other comment?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, that's it.
Okay.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Kevin Pedros. I'm with the Fullerton Police Officers Association. Just want to kind of advocate for our public safety. I know, as you guys are well aware, I've spoken to most of you guys on the council. We are decimated, absolutely decimated. We've had four homicides this year alone, working one currently with a skeleton crew, okay? I, I don't know what else to say, besides, you guys should be focused on public safety and our employees. Our employees are the back of this, backbone of this, of this whole city, and it seems like they're the ones being attacked left and right. And our police department is down to 99 deployable members. We used to have 160 officers on the street, now we're down to 99. That's a very scary settlement. We have cut, 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 and cut, and we have not seen anything to give these guys across the street at the police department, anything to, to give them any positive hope. We have eight potentially leaving here the next couple of months, maybe the next year. And again, what are we gonna do? I know Councilmember Whitaker, I'm sorry, Mayor Whitaker and Councilmember Dunlap, you guys have mentioned you want to go to the sheriff's department. It seems like you guys are pushing for it, without even having to do anything but just letting the city just defund themselves of the police department. And again, we need to be advocating for public safety. Our firefighters, our public works, and us need help. And we're not getting it from any of you guys at this point, and it's pretty disappointing.
I appreciate your comments. I do want clarification on, on one issue. I would ask Ms. Ellis, if our current budget, as it stands right now, has budgeted for how many sworn police officers? Okay, this is the disinformation that I think Councilmember Jung was referring to earlier, because we have budgeted fully for 140.
And with all due respect, sir, I, I, we've budgeted for 140. We have not even seen that number. We have been told basically to stop hiring until the decision's made, either we're gonna have a 2% or 5% cut. There is additionally, there is potentially five laterals that are ready to get hired, and they're still on the pipeline waiting to be hired, because there's no indication if we're gonna have a 5% or 2% cut. If the 5% cut goes through, we're not gonna have any vacancy. We're not gonna have any vacancies, everything's gonna be frozen.
We keep hearing about decimating cuts to the budget, but I need to be shown those in actuality. And so, that's where, at least in the public dialogue, we'd appreciate finding numbers that we can agree on as much as possible. Be willing to work with you on that.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Councilmembers. I'm John Miller with the Fullerton Police Department. I'm on, I'm the vice president. And the only thing I ask for the council, if we could just make a decision as soon as possible, if we're gonna take a 2% or 5% cut, because like Kevin said, with the potential eight people leaving, we need to start backfilling those bodies as soon as possible. So I know it's gonna be a fluid thing with the money, and we can't project exactly how it's gonna be, but if public safety is number one for all four of you up there today, and I would assume five, can we at least make that decision? If we're gonna cut any from there, and if we're not, to give the chief the go-ahead to start hiring these five bodies, if they are gonna be laterals, with anticipation that the, the eight are gonna leave? That's the only thing I ask for.
Understood. I mean, the delay has been in large part to uncertainty in how we could utilize ARPA funds, so we're at that point, you're exactly right.
Yes, sir. Thank you, guys.
Again, we'll ask anybody who wants to speak to please line up, so we can move the public comments along.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I may, while they decide who's coming next, could I get just clarification? So we're budgeting for 140 police officers, and the, it was just stated that we have 99. So we, can we potentially go out and hire 41 officers today? How does that work? So just for clarification.
I, I understand that we have some out on workers' comp claims, right?
Okay, so...
And, but anyway, I shouldn't speak on that, it should be the chief.
Provide some clarity for, if you want. We're budgeted for 140. We've been budgeted for 140 for a few years. We were hovering around 130 during COVID to, to realize some savings. The deployable number comes from those people who are injured, so that does take overall numbers down. But in the $3.8 million salary savings as it stands today, that's, 1.9 million dollars of that is coming from the police department. So in essence, we've already taken a 5% cut.
Right.
If we go for another 2%, and then another 5%, that will eat up all of the vacancy savings that we have in vacant positions, which means, in essence, we would be down to the number that we're at today as our top number, which is why we're not hiring, because then we would have to lay people off in just a few weeks, potentially. So that's why everything is in a state of flux. I hope that answers the question.
And that number would be 130, right?
120, sir. We have 120 today.
Not 99, okay.
That's correct. There are 120 bodies on the books.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, that, that helps.
Okay. Hello, thank you so much for the clarification. Good afternoon, I'm Ekle Nunsy, resident here of Fullerton. And listening, you know, to the study session, which we really appreciate it, I hope we can have one in Spanish, and maybe in Korean, because, look, this is not, not the people you see that we represent here in Fullerton. We're so many, and people are so misinformed, like your state, Mr. Mayor. And thus, people need to know what is happening in our city, and how this fund, you know, that is given by the, you see the administration, Biden, is gonna be distributed in our city. We need, the city is for services. I show you, many of you, the conditions of the park, how, how we're dealing in our neighborhoods, you know, with this situation, the transient crisis, parks, you know, the bathrooms are in a horrible situation. Because of COVID, there are so many restrictions, and many organizations, we don't know how to even handle this situation. And this is, you know, something that the city issue provide these services. And many, we are jumping in to help, adopting park, working, helping, and supporting the police department. We're giving labor for free, because we believe in our city, and that together, we can improve it. This budget cut, we need public safety. We cannot cut more the police department. It's a big nig in our community, fire department, improvement in parks. Like you were saying, we all know what happened. Measures didn't pass, because people don't wanna, you know, work together and improve this. That's why we are in this situation. And when the ARPA money goes, we're gonna come back to the same, until people understand that we all have to work together, pay our taxes, and, you know, and help each other. And this is, you know, what is for me is so heartbroken, that the District 5, which is, you know, the poorest areas, and people pay a lot of taxes improperly. They are the ones that support schools, initiatives by the city, and the north side of the city, they don't. When it's people that, you know, they have more money than it is south part of Fullerton. You know, this is a necessity for all of us, educate our community, working together, because this is just, we're pushing a problem for two more years, of who's gonna come next. And, you know, another thing that is very important, please, we have to keep our work. Is the, the city council agreeing something? When the county needs city council members, they forget about it, and we come back to the same waste of time and money and staff time. Agree on something, look for what is the best for the city, and cuts, they are not a solution. Rescue plans, it means you're gonna rescue your workers, provide services for our community. Public safety, you know, public safety is a priority. Public safety, you know, public safety is a priority for our neighborhoods, for our schools, for all of us, because without that, we cannot function as a city. Thank you so much.
Uh, one, one thing that I'd like to at least propose, you mentioned Measure S, and do you, uh, you know, we determine things by majority rule. We do on the council as well. It takes three votes up here. Uh, the message that I received from the voters was that they were willing, at least a majority of the voters, not all of them, were willing to accept some service cuts if necessary rather than a new permanent tax. Uh, do you concede that that's a possibility?
Look, right now, a lot of people, they were absolutely misinformed. Now we're seeing cuts in the library. Now everybody's advocating for the museum. Nobody thought that this, you know, is going to happen to them and how it's going to be impacted. Now they're seeing the realities. Our cities are in the same situation, and what happened with our community, a lot of people, they don't understand, and maybe mayor, the question is why people don't trust council? Why don't want to give that money to council to provide service to our community? Why do you think that you see councils that are going to make those decisions and how those monies are going to be allocated in our city? Maybe it's the mistrust in our administration, our city. Maybe we should start there and talking neighbor to neighbor. We walk the streets and we talk with our neighbors. We see the horrible parts in our city, and I ask you, all of you, how many times you walk your neighborhood? How many times you go and talk door by door with your, you see your, your families? Maybe you, mayor, because you have how many times?
I just wanted a short answer from you, not to spot you another three minutes. So, I appreciate what you're saying. Thank you.
Thank you so much, mayor. Appreciate it.
Sure.
And if we have any other speakers, would you please line up? Otherwise, it's like, looks like it'll be our last one.
Hi, good evening. My name is Kareem. I lived here for a long time. Um, I do have a lot of points with you guys. Uh, one of them was what, uh, Council Silva said. Uh, my daughters have been on the explorers program, um, since they were young, and now they're cadets. And I just want to say that you guys are making the best girls, maybe future police, but apparently they're not going to work here. So, you already have two maybe leaving. So, that's something that you guys need to consider. We need a lot of public safety. There was just another stabbing. There's no lights on the streets. You know, it's just a lot of things going on. It's, I know it's hard to be on your shoes because you guys need to make all these decisions, but it's, um, I mean, you're like my, um, the guy here said, I think he said it better than anyone. And another thing, I, this is, um, directly to Council Fred Young, I don't understand what you mean about the trails and making them and what does that have to do with anything? I think, um, is that you don't want to make, like, hire people to, so we can have parks? Or is there something, um, maybe a misunderstanding?
Would you like me to clarify for you?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I'm happy to do that. Uh, parks and trails cost money to maintain, and we're happy to build them, but never think about the long-term impact of maintaining them and recognize that when trash cans are not emptied, residents complain. When homeless are at the parks and doing derelict, uh, things in those parks, when there's crime in those parks, the folks complain. So, perhaps we have to think and rethink what we, how we design those parks so we don't, we can avoid at, at best, some of the problems that are, uh, foundationally wrong in that area. Does that make sense to you now? I'm not saying we're opposed to parks. I'm saying we have to rethink what a park should look like or a trail should look like.
Yeah, it does make sense, and I actually would like to have a meeting, um, person with you. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Mr. Gamble.
Good evening, mayor, city council. My name is, uh, Curtis Gamble, activist for the homeless and the veterans. Uh, I just, um, want to talk about the, um, the, um, American Rescue Act funding. I'm, I'm, I'm going to say, um, I, I know that we're in a lot of financial trouble, you know, the city of Fullerton, and so has many other cities. So, it's good that we work together and, uh, straighten these things out. Um, I, I, I want to share this with you. You know, when I was growing up, I, me and my two sisters, we always played the game of Monopoly, and that was the best game for, I guess, the whole neighborhood, actually. But in the game of Monopoly, it, it was very fair. It started off, you know, everybody, when we started the game, everybody got their funding. You know, we issued funding to, to everybody, and then we played it, and it was a lot like life, you know? And, and it was, it was great. Um, but the funding, you know, for everything, for the police, for everything, you know, on the board, it was, it was created equally, you know, throughout the, throughout the game. And so, I'd like to see us do that as we carry on our day-to-day, um, uh, opportunities to make the community better. Um, the other thing is, um, the, again, the, the homeless, um, we have to take care of that problem. You know, it's just, it's just important. I just want to share that with you. Uh, the other, the other thing is OCTA, OCTA bus company, they can help us with our streets. They have the same issues that we have, but the only thing is that they're very good at getting funding for these type of projects. Um, the other one is Disneyland. Disneyland, we need to work more with Disneyland in every way. Disneyland has the same issues that we have as far as like homeless, but again, Disney would like to bring a train here for their tourists. Their tourist, biggest tourist is from January to June, six months, and that's when they make a huge amount of money. So, we have to look at different things like that, you know? Um, the, um, police department, um, I like the police department, and I like, you know, protection for, for the community. I think that they do a good job, but again, I go back to homeless. We need to work on that issue also because it affects every different occupation. Um, who else is on here? The fire department. Again, we go back to homeless. Again, because it, it affects the, uh, fire department greatly, because I was homeless for eight years, and I remember calling the home, calling the fire department many times to help us. So, I think that we just need to work together and do this thing together openly. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gamble. With that, we will bring discussion back to the council.
We do have one hand raised in Zoom.
Oh, that's right. Sorry.
And caller ending, and something I have to squint to read here. 9894. You should be able to talk.
Hello?
There you are.
Hello? Okay.
Yes, fine.
Um, this is, uh, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. Good evening, mayor and council. This is Diane Venna. I just, um, was not prepared to think, uh, speak tonight, but I just had a few thoughts. I have been a resident of Fullerton for probably about 35 years. Um, I too have been disappointed with our roads, and I know it's going to take a long time to fix them. However, even though that is a priority, I don't see it as the only priority, and I just would ask that you consider people who are saying, let's fix our roads, would they truly understand if you made cuts of two percent or five percent where you're cutting staff even more, where we don't have library services, um, safety, um, funding for the police and fire, um, for the museum? We have choices, and so using all that money just for roads isn't going to get us where we need to get. And I think people would be very upset if they lost other services that are very important to them. And those things are just as important to me as the roads are. So, um, that's, my suggestion is to, um, solicit people's response when they understand what the true cuts would be just to fix the roads. And I don't mean stop fixing the roads, but other things are a priority also. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment.
And that was the only hand raised in Zoom.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. Okay, uh, we'll come back to council then. Uh, Councilmember Jung.
Um, you know, class warfare is a tool that's often used by extraordinarily lazy politicians to say that the richer to blame are those that are well off to blame for problems that we may have institutionally. It's, uh, categorically misguided. As a city, we are all in the same boat. We should all be rowing together. And to say that one district, uh, has a better, uh, attention, uh, of services than another, uh, and to pit them against one another, saying that, uh, this one requires more focus, what you are asking for is justice, not equity. And it's fair to say that District Five requires more attention because it's a marginalized community, maybe one of the poorest in our city. That's fair. That's just. That's not equitable. So, to pit, uh, one Fullertonian against one another, I don't know that we're doing, uh, any of us a great service here. The values you possess in District Five, or I possess in District One, or anyone possesses throughout Fullerton are equal. We all want the same shared things. This is what these budget studies are about. What are those shared things? And we're not far off from one another, as you can see. Councilman Silva and I tend to agree, as does the mayor and the mayor pro tem. We recognize what's important to our residents. It's just how we go about getting there that's being debated now. And I think that's what is the misinformation that's being spread out there. And on the matter with, uh, regards to the tax increase or the Measure S, please, uh, keep in mind, two of the council members here weren't even elected when that was on the ballot. The other thing to keep in mind is there were some council members that were here that voted for that, and they should have been out in front, communicated that, and said, this is what happens. So, if they failed to do that, and you're saying now, well, if only the public knew, well, it's not my fault, that's not you, the public's fault, that's somebody not communicating that. So, again, I encourage all of you to recognize our values remain the same. It's just how we go about getting there, I think, that we slightly differ on. And I would appreciate folks up here and in our community recognizing that so we can come together and find solutions rather than point fingers and talk about who's to blame. Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Um, I, I'll weigh in at least at this point with some comments in summary. You know, in many ways, for this council, some choices have already been made for us. We mentioned Measure S earlier, but a, a major choice has been made for us even many, many years ago. Uh, public safety pension costs are the fastest growing cost that this city government faces year to year. That is not an attack on law enforcement. As you've seen, we have pretty much unanimous support on the council that public safety is our highest priority. It's not an attack on law enforcement to state that. It is merely a fact, and that fact is causing an erosion of our ability right now in particular to be able to field services in other areas. And many of the speakers come up and say completely over and over again, public safety is our highest priority, but there are consequences to that being the case. We do want to maintain and field effective and professional public safety, both police and fire, but that cost right now is something that's very difficult to bear. A couple other areas that have really greatly increased costs on city governments, not just Fullerton, but other city governments as well. The, um, the increased propensity of homelessness and some of the effects of homelessness and the drain on services that result and some of the damage that results, uh, that's something that we're all having to bear right now. It's, it's a current condition, as is the pandemic and the lockdown. And so often, some adjustments need to be made, as, uh, the mayor pro tem stated earlier. Uh, when you're not able to provide a service in part because of restrictions and conditions in a lockdown, it's exceedingly difficult to maintain your full workforce. In fact, it doesn't make sense. What would they be working on in many cases if the public isn't there to be served during a lockdown? So, there are hard choices up here. We don't relish any of those choices, any, anytime you have to look at something and say, we're going to have to spend this over here, and it's just not going to be available in this area. I know, uh, Councilmember Jung, when we opened the meeting here, he talked about some of the priorities, especially the streets and the street repair. That's very high. I agree with him completely. He mentioned, uh, water delivery. You know, our water department is an enterprise fund. It's separate from the city's finances generally. So, if we have a problem with not hiring the right level of expertise, uh, there have been numerous rate increases in water, and they continue, they're, they're scaled up over time. So, maybe we should look and talk about some of the priorities within that department, but that's not part of our general fund here that we're talking about. And I failed, I passed my note over to you. The last item that we had on that list was what, Mr.?
IT.
Yes, the IT system. Oh, uh, security cameras actually was something that you highlighted prior to that. And especially with these murders that have been having, happening recently, I was aghast to find out that those cameras haven't been working for some time, apparently a server problem or something like that. I think that would be an exceedingly high priority by everybody up here, and we need to be made aware of that. Unlike someone said earlier, I'm serving a second time as mayor, I'm actually serving my third term as mayor. And, but I have not heard anything of that sort about those cameras being dysfunctional. I was mayor when we opened the SOCO parking structure. I was amazed that that included some 63 cameras to ensure safety and security for people utilizing them. I would be extremely alarmed to understand that somehow we can't find the change, the loose change necessary. I don't want to minimize it. I'm sure it's more expensive than it should be, but to be able to restore that and to make those functional. And of course, we need people who will monitor those cameras to make that functional as well. But I appreciated what you said earlier, Councilmember Jung, because you really did boil it down fairly early in terms of what the priorities are. And I would, I would only take a little issue with the enterprise fund of the water department, but, uh, there's no question that we need to stem and reduce the number of water main breaks in this city, which create great expense for us. If any other council members want to summarize, this would be the time.
Yeah, I would just add, I mean, we, look, we've talked about this earlier in this meeting, we talked about it in the last meeting and in prior meetings. I think we need to continue in the path of probably a, a two percent additional cuts. At least this is my own recommendations, that we look at something in the two to four percent additional cuts, so we can actually understand, and here's the thing, not just, not just this percentage, but to understand what the true impact would be based on the recommendations and the priorities that were outlined, uh, in our discussion earlier today. I think that would be very helpful so we can understand what service impacts would be. And I also think that we look at, you know, those cuts in conjunction with the ARPA funding toward, uh, roads and streets and, and figuring out how we can work to best maximize the use of that fund to improve roads and streets. That's, that's what I'd like to see. Those are, you know, my, kind of, my priorities that really haven't wavered the entire time. So, if we could see something like that, it'd be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Silva.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, um, well, as I stated, I, I'd like to see us give back some money. I mean, I, I would, I would agree with some of the people out there. I would like to see Scenario One or Four, and then we're going with Scenario One. I would like, like us to give back, uh, you know, reduce that 3.8 vacancy so we can give back some, uh, additional funds into the department heads. Uh, that, you know, and the, the way I see it, if, if we're choosing Scenario Two and Three with a cut, uh, and then we move forward with those two to five percent cuts, uh, we, we are going, we're going to get closer to shutting down units, departments, and, and, and perhaps becoming a contract city and eliminating the unions. Uh, I know in some of the, the comments that the council has made up here, that there seems to be in, on occasion, the disdain for unions that are, uh, working hard for us, and, and it is a, a path to middle, to the, uh, middle income to, to move forward. So, I, I, I wouldn't advocate for a two, four, five percent cut. I mean, if, if we're going that way, we're, we're going to see our, our employees, uh, be gone, our, our, uh, you know, our middle income, uh, professionals leave. And, uh, and on your point about the enterprise fund, uh, with water, um, so if that's the case, could they, in essence, on their own, scale up their pay scale so they can attract the, the proper engineer, the proper personnel to address some of the issues? Uh, I, I know we, we've never gone to look at a, at a, a study where we compare salaries across, uh, the county, but, uh, I mean, if we're talking enterprise fund, I guess, I would say, let them come back and, and see what they could do with that money that's, uh, from my understanding, can already be spent on water, to hire the prop, the, the right engineers, the qualified engineers to keep our systems going. Yeah, again, not sure if that would be set up.
If I may just briefly, my understanding is a shortage of such people, more than it is the affordability question. But someone could please correct me if that's not right.
Yeah, well, maybe you're right, but I mean, I think if we offer them enough to come here, competitive, we, I mean, the way I see it, if you're competitive, you're going to attract some individuals to do the work, you know, like anything else. But what was more than, oh, and, yeah, so that was just a question or a comment from them. But again, I would look at Scenario One or Four, and then we're doing Scenario One. Let's give back something to the department, so we can start revving up. We were in a lockdown, we are, I guess, in a partial lockdown, but I believe we're going to be opening up. We're going to be required to provide additional services, and we have to be ready to ramp up. And I think the sooner the better. Thank you.
Well, we have two who have weighed in on either the cuts or in another direction. So Councilmember Jung, what say you on this?
Mr. Mayor, I would agree with my esteemed councilman to the left of me, that a 5% cut, if we're at critical mass now, 5% cut is untenable without sacrificing enormous amounts for our city. However, I do would ask and encourage a 2% cut across the board, utilizing ARPA money to fill in gaps along the way. And I don't think 2% cut requires us to eliminate positions. I think we just have to be smart about how we staff those positions accordingly. If this time of COVID gives us anything, it allows us a time to come not only together as a community, but become more efficient as one as well. And perhaps that's where we need to be for our fiscal health in the near future. I'm certainly willing to investigate that as we move forward. But, Mr. Mayor, if, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jung. The considerations of the emergency situation that we're in, I personally have not really felt the dire emergency of a 2% cut. It would be considered the lightest of cuts in the private sector when we have a downturn or a problem. It would be something almost just as a matter of course. So I hear what you're saying on that. I also would like to say that we do our budgets annually here, and we make adjustments annually. So even though we're looking at a five-year span at this point, there's nothing that would prevent us from going back and looking at this year hence and making course correction. That's always an option. So when we look at putting something in stone, like for a five-year plan, I would suggest that nothing is in stone. Conditions change. And we would certainly like to restore service levels as soon as that's possible. But I too also share the idea that of the choices here, and I lean a little more in the direction of the mayor pro tem, but I figure the very least that could be done at this point to help shore up and try to move away from this structural condition that we find ourselves in would be, it would send the wrong message to make no cuts, to just have a status quo type budget. And so I would certainly lean in the direction of making that cut. It's nothing that we're voting on right now. We're only providing direction right now. So should that come back to us, I'm just trying to inform you as to my lean on it.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Sure.
Just a clarification. I believe I heard Ms. Chang say that we do an additional 2% cut. That would be 14 positions, correct?
That would be an additional 14 positions on top of the approximate 37 positions for the 3.8 million vacancy savings.
And so there, and then if we are concerned with public safety, we're going to go get those 14 positions from other departments if that's, I mean, we said public safety and infrastructure is priority. So somewhere along the line, I go back, we're going to have to cut a whole unit department and be a contract city and, you know, eliminate the opportunity for our employees. And I don't think we're standing still, because right now, we have, we've been carrying a 3.8 vacancy since the pandemic, when everyone kicked in and, like the police chief said, they, in essence, chipped in and with 5%, 1.9 million to help us balance the budget during the pandemic crisis. So, I mean, I don't think when we say we don't want to do nothing, that 3.8 vacancy is doing a lot. We've done a lot. And we are at the bottom level of people that we have. I mean, our services are at the lowest. We're moving from here to here to try and address certain issues. So again, I don't feel making additional cuts would overall help the city. And you're right, this is a fluid budget. I mean, we can come back next month if we get some of the news and say, okay, we're doing this. But I think we also have to send a message to the residents and constituents and our employees that, look, we're in this together, and we're going to support you the best we can. I think right now, you know, that 34 million came down. Let's use it. Let's provide, you know, invest in manpower and in human infrastructure. So I would be opposed to any additional cuts, just because, again, that's going to decimate a lot of our employees and our departments.
You know, I just want to add to that, because it seems like, you know, the reality is, I've been on council for nine months. I think in that time, you know, I must have asked previous city manager Ken Domer for an organization chart, you know, showing how many employees worked in each department on about four or five occasions, never got anything. And I'd asked Mr. Danley, our interim city manager, for that shortly after he joined and, you know, saw a work in progress at some point, but never really saw anything else. And so the reality is, you know, we're here making these decisions related to our budget. And, you know, it's frustrating to have colleagues that want to sort of, you know, kind of confuse the issues, right? We're here to address the financial circumstances. There's also a human aspect to that, because we're talking about, in some cases, you know, personnel and payroll. But the reality is, I have yet to be provided any sort of facts that would help me understand just exactly what those service levels, you know, what the impact would be. You know, I don't think it's asking for a lot. I mean, certainly, we know who is on the city payroll. You know, I don't really feel it's incumbent upon me to do my own research on Transparent California, but, you know, certainly, that would be one option. I don't know if that's what I should be left with as a council member at this point. But the reality is, we were all elected by the voters, by the citizens of Fullerton, to represent their interests. And I think in part of doing that, you know, it's really, we need to prioritize, you know, the city's financial position. And certainly, as we're looking at the picture, you know, looking at where we're at today, we really, there's much, leaves much to be improved. And so I think the reality is, we can get up here and talk about how we need to hire more people, but I think, given the city's current financial position, that's probably the last thing that we want to do. We've talked about some of the positions that are already in current staffing plans that are budgeted for. Hey, those should be filled up. There's absolutely no reason they shouldn't be hired. There's nothing that this council is doing to involve themselves or hinder them, you know, or hinder those departments from making those adjustments. But I think the reality is, you know, we get presented with this information sort of piecemeal, and, oh my gosh, these cuts are so drastic and they're significant. It's going to have a very big impact on the city. But the reality is, anything that, you know, any kind of practical information that we could use to understand what those impacts might be has not been provided, and there's no context within, you know, within the folder that we get with the information. So I know it's frustrating and it's challenging, and it's easy to sit at home and send emails or in an auditorium and make these comments, but the reality is, I think, as the mayor maybe noted earlier, you know, it's a challenge to get up here and deal with this, and it doesn't help when you have colleagues that are sort of mixing things up or muddying the waters. So, thanks.
Well, Mayor Pro Tem?
If I may clear the water, I mean, we got this form last session, and it talks about the impact to every department based on the cuts. You know, 929,000 would, four positions would be cut from the police, two positions from parking control, three police clerk positions, two maintenance workers.
Those were options that don't coincide with anything that was directly, you know, reflected in a discussion. That was what, that was what a city employee, you know, kind of took and just doing their own initial, you know, like they provided the classification earlier, that doesn't tell us what that's, what the result is going to be. You know, that doesn't tell us, hey, that, you know, parks will not be clean, that things will be littered with trash. So, you know, again, it's a simple comment that, you know, trying to get information as to things.
The simplicity is that if you're going to reduce the maintenance workers by six positions, you're not going to be able to clean up as much, right? The reality is, if you got a crew of 10 cleaning the streets and now you're done to four, reality would say they're not going to do as much in the eight hours, nine hours, it's going to take longer. If you're losing four police officers.
My seven-year-old could have come to that same understanding.
Let me finish. I let you finish, if I may, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. So, and this was given to us to look at what does $3.8 million in cuts look like? So, I mean, if you're losing three police clerks, so that means somebody in management has to go down and do some of that staffing, which I'm sure they're all willing to do in a pinch, but if you keep going at this, you're taking, you know, sergeants who should be investigating crimes doing, you know, police records clerk. I'm sure in your business, Mr. Donlap, you could pinch in for your clerical staff, your ministaff, but if you keep doing that on a consistent basis, you're wasting your time and effort doing some of the clerical stuff where you should be, you know, doing your regular job. So, you know, this may be someone, someone created, but it addresses the 3.8 million. Now, this could be a starting point. If you want to continue with the 3.8 million cuts, here's what it's going to take. And if you don't want to have the police officers cut, okay, and then let's rearrange the numbers. But I think it's disingenuous to say we were never given facts, and we're muddering the water. I mean, right here, if you don't agree with these, sit down with somebody and say, okay, 3.8. How do we, where are those vacant positions? How does that 3.8 million equal out? And let them provide you with something, you know, ask. So it's here, you know.
If I may, Councilmember, I, at least in trying to be between the two of you on this, that's not the same as an organization chart showing every employee.
Oh, no, I understand the organization chart, but when he was saying that he's never been given anything to justify the cuts or what the impact is.
Well, that's only for 3.8. That's not, you know, and again, that's not my, again, my comment was in relation to the operations. It's understanding, you know, I don't need to come to an assumption on my own. That's not, that's not my business. And quite honestly, I'm not here to micromanage the city staff. You know, if we were given information that was, you know, easily digested, that you could review and understand, okay, this is going to, this is the impact this is going to have, it'd be a much different story. And so it was a simple clarification that I don't need you to comment on.
Well, I'll comment.
If we could have staff bring that back, it would be most helpful.
I'll comment to staff, is that if we do additional 2%, we're going to do, instead of four, six police officers and one battalion chief, and we'll do four firefighters. And so if we go with the additional 5%, you know, that takes 10 positions, 10 police officers, we would do that. So I mean.
So you're saying you would like to cut 10 police officers and four firefighters?
No, I'm saying, the people who are wanting 2% to 5% additional cut would require the police chief to reduce his staff by 10 more.
Right. Based on a staff rough draft, is what I'm saying. And again, I don't know, I don't know why you would reject asking for simple facts and clarification and data and understanding and making a decision of a $220 million budget.
If I may, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Jung.
And we're going to agree or disagree, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, so, but I'm just saying that the facts are here, the numbers are here.
I think with respect to Councilman Silva, he would agree that that was, those numbers are articulated with a very broad stroke. I think for our city's sake, I think all of us understand that we need to be surgical in how we go about this process. So while those broad numbers generate, describe in some sort of detail what the impact would be, I think we are, our job here is to mitigate that impact as best as possible, and we can do that by surgically doing it, not by, you know, assuming the worst-case scenario.
Well, if we, if I may, Mr. Mayor, if we do it surgically, that means we were going to get in there and decide the cuts and decide what's going on. I don't want to be in with the city manager and saying, cut here, cut here, if we're going to do it surgically. I mean, but I mean, that's what you're saying, right? We have to be precise. And so my point is, there's already 3.8 million, million dollars in vacancies. Let them start with that and don't increase that, because that's going to impact us. And I would say, our staff has always done a great job with numbers and providing the data. So if you're not believing this, then I don't know what to say. I mean, I think our staff is very competent, and they're providing some solid numbers here. We're just not looking, well, we're looking at them differently, I guess.
Well, I would come from this direction, which is, Mayor Pro Tem and Councilmember Jung have been on the council going on 10 months now, I believe, correct? I've been here for 11 years. This is my 11th year. And I do have to admit that at most junctures, it has seemed that I was being, I was receiving the experience of the mushroom theory of management. Because it's not just the short time that the mayor pro tem has not been provided an organizational chart. I haven't been provided it in 11 years. And so for you to show a slice and say, here's the whole story, that really is not the whole story. And those of us who have worked in the private sector, we understand that you really need to get your arms around the organization, not to micromanage. What you're showing is those recommendations, that's what staff chose to say, if you're asking for a 2% cut, here's what we would do. That's not what the council decided. And I do want to explain to everybody out here that the reason it's messy when we have a discussion like this, and there's some back and forth, is the Brown Act actually creates that. We don't have an opportunity to sit with ourselves and talk pros and cons. We can't do that. I can only speak in detail with one other council member at any time on any upcoming agenda item. So the fact that it gets messy and that we find points of contention, that's not surprising to me. I think it's actually healthy to let it play out a little bit and to talk about it. But I concur with you that when council members request information, and it's readily available information, it's staff's job. It's their duty to provide that information. And I have seen very many instances of falling short of that mark over 11 years on this council. I understood it better at times when I was locked in a minority of the council, that sometimes you can be dumped on, so to speak. But I really don't understand it now. I don't understand at all, when we have a council that's pretty much in play, why staff would not readily and willingly provide necessary information to any member of this council.
And I would say, again, you're right, this is not an organization chart, but I think this was provided for us as a starting point. We can take this and then decide, it's a tool that we can use. So, you know, you're right, we haven't gotten an organization chart, and maybe that's where we start.
Could I give a point of clarification?
Sure.
In the last budget session we had, I walked through organization charts for 3.8, for 2%, 5%, showing where those cuts would be on our organization chart and what the impacts would be. It may not be in complete detail with the organization charts presented there, and then after the meeting, we presented them to all the council members.
Thank you.
It just seems to me that the 14 positions.
All right, go ahead. We, well, first of all, that's actually, that's inaccurate to say that we were presented with those. I still have yet to get one.
We emailed them to all council members.
So, okay.
I'll make sure you get them, because.
Yeah. Did, I mean, did, did you guys get them? I didn't, I didn't get one.
No, I haven't seen one, actually. It's possible, I get lots of emails, it's possible something fell between the cracks, but I would be most interested in it, really.
So.
They were, it was pretty much, it was a slide deck that we presented. So you saw it visually, and then we were supposed to get them to you afterwards in hard copy. And if you didn't get them, then that's our fault, and we'll take care of that.
But to that point, those are the slides. That would be, that coincides with that chart.
I was going to say, so, and those charts coincide with these numbers, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so these numbers represent that chart, but it's not a physical, an actual chart. But, I mean, this is the starting point where you presented and said, here's where we're going to be at in different scenarios. And so we did see that. Now, I do recall seeing it, and I may have missed it in my emails too. I don't recall getting it, but I remember seeing it now in our last presentation.
And to be fair, Councilman Silva, to your point, I don't know that any of us here are arguing the staff numbers. I don't know that that's up for debate. I think we're talking about being surgical, being more precise.
Yeah.
And if that requires more of my time here, then, as the young man said here today, it's in my district, I'll be here.
Well, no, and I understand that we're all willing to do that, but I don't think we should be in the middle of deciding who gets cut, who doesn't. I mean, we should analyze and look at this. And again, my point with Mayor Donlap was that, when he mentioned that we hadn't received anything, and I was making this point, that we did receive at least an exhibit, a starting point, whether we believe it or not, it was given to us. And that was really the point I was trying to make, and it went from there.
Okay, so my point to that would be that that's not very robust, doesn't have a lot of detail, it's got positions by departments. I think, you know, look, my interest in this is not looking, so it's not to understand, you know, it's to be able to understand the operation of the city and how the city is functioning at the current service levels. Because you know what? When I drive the city, or when people come to my house and they tell me, hey, did you see this over here? Or did you, have you been over here and have you noticed this? I mean, those are the concerns that get brought to me that I then go to look at. And so I know what I see, you know? I know somebody here had commented about trash in the medians and, you know, trash on the side of the road and a lot of the transient activity. I mean, gosh, I notice that all the time. And I've got, if I don't notice, I've got two little kids in the backseat that usually tend to point it out to me. So, you know, clearly, the idea is trying to understand, hey, what's the model behind how the city is operating now? Because I'd like to understand that, so that I know what we could potentially adjust and how we can, you know, help support or adjust service levels in those areas. So that's why it's information and understanding, and I don't know why anybody wouldn't want more of that.[1798.91]
I, I understand what you're saying, because it's not in an effort to micromanage, but it's to understand the context and see what priorities are being determined by those actions by staff. It's part of the natural accountability that needs to happen between the public, we represent the public, and the staff. So with that, Mr. Acting City Manager, is there anything further?
Next steps, when would council, we're looking for a meeting date that you would like to actually vote on what your preferences are for the budget as far as 3.8, 2% cuts, 5% cut, or whatever choice you'd like to make. And then once we know those, then we'll know how much ARPA money is left to designate for projects, and then we can use the next meeting to make selections on where the ARPA money goes.
Well, we meet next week, right?
Yeah, that's too soon.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, we, in order to meet the deadlines.
All right, as soon as possible.
Mr. Mayor, I would agree. If we can get this done for the first October meeting, one of the things that rank true and I hold dear that most of our employees have said is they'd like certainty now. Sooner the better. So let's, let's afford them that courtesy, please.
All right, the, the next practicable date here, the soonest possible.
It should be the first meeting in October, 5.
All right. And anything further? Seeing nothing?
No, sir.
We are adjourned until our next regular meeting, September 21, public session at 6:30.